Call to order at seven nineteen. Can I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss, hang on. Two point one contract matter individual employee. That's it.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
I think Jenzy was getting something, right? But I guess we'll just.
I think so.
Yeah.
So, call to order, seven fifty-one. We are, we entered into executive session at seven nineteen to discuss two point one contract matter individual employee and two point two personnel matter individual employee. And we rise for the pledge allegiance.
Yes.
Two point two?
Yes.
Okay, in a minute. A pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic of America. To the republic of our citizens. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Just a quick change, I just have to, we had a add in two point two personnel matter individual employee. So can I have a motion to amend the exec agenda to add in two point two personnel matters?
Does that approve the overall agenda too?
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor? And to approve the overall agenda for today.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. And can I have a motion? Do we have any comments from the public?
Not yet.
No? Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda personnel, consent agenda special services, and consent agenda business?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
And now.
Is this a special guest?
We have special guests. It's always my favorite time and what an amazing year our special guests have had. I don't know if you've ever watched a board meeting before, I'm thinking, you have?
Actually, yeah, there was like an induction.
Well, I was like, you have?
There was an induction ceremony earlier this year with the, from my kids that were in that board meeting. So I saw that one.
Excellent. And you came back, that's amazing. Pretty amazing. Yeah, so.
They're all available. You could do like a marathon thing out of board meetings. You just finished the show, so yeah.
Yes, exactly. So at every board meeting, at the end of the board meeting, usually I do student highlights. I would like to focus on one of those highlights right now instead of having you wait until the end of the board meeting. I am so incredibly proud of our speech and debate students and how far they have come. And we have seven students who were involved in this New York State Speech and Debate Championship. And we are fortunate to have four of our students with us right now. I would love it if you could each stand up and tell us about what your accomplishments were. We have it ready or written for everyone. This is like, this is my homework, my I love you so much. But I would love the opportunity for you to stand up, introduce yourselves to the board. They may or may not know you already and talk about what you did in that amazing tournament. Why don't we start with you, Aiden?
Hi, I'm Aiden Aldeolustig. I'm on the speech team, I'm president of the team. I've been doing it for a few years now, well, since freshman year. My sister actually started the team. It used to just be the debate team and she turned it into the speech and debate team. So I'm carrying in, you know, her footsteps and fulfilling the family legacy, so to speak. So this was my second year doing original oratory where you basically write a speech and then deliver it about any topic of your choice. It just has to be persuasive. So I think it's a really cool event. It's like a TED Talk, you can think of it that way. So you just write a ten minute speech, deliver it, talk about anything that you want. This year, I'm giving my speech about freedom of speech and about how, you know, if we start to censor each other, then we're slowly going to lose our right to free speech and how that comes in at both the government level and at the individual level. So this year at states, I was state champion in original oratory for the second year in a row.
State champion. That's amazing. And is there a speech recorded for us to see?
Um, I don't.
I have a recording.
We have a.
It was not a great one.
It was earlier in the year, so it wasn't when I was at my best.
Done in secret because you're not allowed to record them. As a parent sitting in the back, I.
Will this thing recorded?
I reported it in, Tina put up her pocket.
Put like a little bar over his eyes so they can't see.
Some of us have speeches to give in a few weeks.
If you need any coaching.
Some of us could come to you for a little help.
Graduation speech consulting practice you can have.
Practices are on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Or you can do what a lot of youth writers do. So I would like to give a speech tonight for graduation and for that speech, I'm going to read what Aiden.
Borrow someone else's work.
It's a timely and important topic, too.
It really is. Yeah, that's great, thank you. Okay, we'll go to Valentina.
Oh, hello everybody, I'm Valentina Marino. I've been on the speech and debate team since freshman year, Aiden actually introduced me to it. I do the subdivision of dramatic interpretation, which is, I basically have to deliver a dramatic speech with character and usually they tend to be very dark. This year, I chose a speech called Good Mother, which is a mother pleading to the jury to free her so she can go find her son. I'll leave the gross details out. It's very dark and very intense and I placed fourth at the state championship. But my most important feat was actually fall of twenty twenty-three where I performed a speech called The Property Knows Garland by Billy Van Zandt at Carnegie Hall.
She came in first at Carnegie.
And Dr. Lamia and Mr. Lamia go to see her in plays. Outside of Byron Hill.
I appreciate it, right?
Yeah, we're on the list for this summer. Okay, how about Emmy Nagura?
Um, hello, I'm Emmy Napdora. I do declamation in speech. And I, declamation is when you take someone else's speech and you interpret it and you wish in the division. And I placed fifth in this, in.
States.
Jersey State. Um, my speech is about taking risks. It's by Josh Gad and, um, yeah.
Josh Gad was a speech kid when he was in high school.
As in, as in the snowman?
Yeah, before he played a lot.
Book of Mormon, right?
He actually was a two-time national champion.
That's pretty amazing. Good history. All right, and last but not least, Badan Chiravi.
Hi, everyone, my name is Badan Chiravi. I'm a freshman, this is my first year doing speech. I'm also doing the declamation as Emmy explained. You just basically memorize a ten minute speech of somebody else's but interpret it in your own way. My speech, my speech is about how crime should be accepted in society by Shelby Blumer. And my most important, I'm sorry, I placed at state's sixth place and my most important feat was placing first at Ridge in New Jersey.
Ridge is one of the biggest tournaments in the tri-state area.
I love that we have you as the interpreter.
Well, I'm the coach.
I know, but it's great that we get the inside scoop.
He sells us more than we do ourselves.
It's what a coach is for, right? It's really, really good. So first, I wanted to say how proud we are of you and these moments when you could come to the Board of Education and be videotaped to the public to see how you pursued a passion and did it well and enjoyed it. And now we're watching not only generations of siblings, but we're watching freshmen through to seniors who are engaging in this. It's really pretty unique here at Byron Hills and pretty special. Do me a favor and thank your sister for starting the speech part of the speech and debate. And we wanted to just give you, I like presents, so we wanted to just give you a nice little present.
Want to come with?
It's the first time I've ever said that.
No, 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 can they put it on Bobcat TV so we can create a library?
I don't mean to be sexist in the colors, but this is the extra large. You're very welcome. Congratulations, thank you all so much. Now, listen, we don't give gifts usually, but I knew this was kind of a special night, so you know, you don't have to share with everybody that you got gifts. And we hope you wear them with pride. And if they are not the right size, you let us know and we will get you the right size.
Thank you, that was very nice of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. And grandma's here also, which is really good.
I did say cross country.
Thank you guys so much for doing.
Thank you so much for having us.
Congrats, Coach. Welcome to stay for the budget meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great to meet you so much. Thank you so much. So proud of you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Congratulations. That was wonderful.
Amazing.
Is it possible for Bobcat TV, before they graduate some of them, to like record them just so there's a library for the future for kids to like look at and be like, oh, that's what they mean by that? Just a thought.
I wonder.
I don't know if it's copyright, I don't know if you're allowed to.
Yeah, I don't know either. I don't know.
You can do it in practice while you're signing, while they practice.
I'm just thinking like, just so, you know, because he, his sister started it, so he carried the torch, but I don't want to go want it to lose momentum. And if someone's like, oh, I don't understand the difference between this or that, they could just look back and see the speeches.
I, I don't know what the coach does or.
Are there events here? Speech and debate events here?
Sometimes there is one.
We host one.
Sophie goes home and we record it.
I don't know what the room is for that.
No, I don't, I don't know, like they don't record Mama Mia.
Something worth reading.
It's in a room with a judge.
Yeah, we're at the asking.
And then the science research wasn't recorded, so I don't know.
I remember when, when Alex was on debate, I remember they used to go, kind of go into a room. It was very private.
Yeah. Sorry.
Very exciting.
Great job.
Impressive.
Special report. Adoption of the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two. Twenty-four, twenty-five budgets.
Post.
Not even.
It's the end of the year.
That's right, that's right. So our final adoption of budget, we have one more on May seventh, our budget hearing before our final vote on May twenty-first. Just quickly, as a reminder, and I've heard this before, our percentage increase budget to budget, three point seven five percent. Three point seven a million dollar increase, a total budget of one hundred and three, four sixty-four, seven twenty-six.
We're laughing because pretty much all of the board members were at the high school principal's coffee table. Which they've heard on.
Actually, you know what, it is a little different. Stay tuned.
Okay.
Change things up.
So this budget keeps all our program services and continues to maintain athletic programs, extracurricular as well as transportation services. This, you've heard many times. The budget is broken up into three categories, program, capital, administrative. Program being almost seventy-three percent budget, capital fifteen point four, administrative eleven point, uh, eleven point nine. In terms of expenditures, a large portion of our expenditures associated with salary and benefits, seventy-eight point seven percent. Contractual services at thirteen point eight. Supplies and equipment is the next, at two point six. Debt service, two point four. Two remaining years in our debt service payments. Maintenance projects, one point eight and point seven for vehicle replacement. This is a different slide. So the, the state budget finally got finalized. So in, in the formula, this long complicated formula, we received additional aid, building aid associated with the Comenhill Water Project. That wasn't in the first run, okay? So it was in this final run because they, they use different numbers to calculate the aid. So we got more aid, we paid the same, we got more aid. So this minus this is a, is a lower number, okay?
Which is a good thing.
Well, it, yes. It reduces our maximum allowable tax levy from three point three to three point two eight, okay? We got more aid that reduced our max, okay? Eleven thousand dollars, eleven twenty-nine seventy-nine in aid rate. Hope that made sense? So that was that change, that's why we went from three point three to three point two eight. Revenue, now we have finalized numbers here, state aid, four point five percent. Majority of our revenue comes from tax, their local taxpayers at eighty-seven point five percent. Fund balance and reserves to balance the budget, three point seven, pilots, two point five, and finally, other revenue at one point eight. So these are numbers associated with those percentages. Again, tax levy max at three point two eight percent, about two point, two point nine million dollars. Increase in pilot payments, eleven percent. Large increase in the other revenue of fifty-five percent. Again, that's associated with an increased assumption in terms of interest and our share of county sales tax. Again, small reduction in state aid from, much different from the last presentation of two point five percent. That's really associated with our transportation aid. Again, we didn't purchase buses last year, so we're not getting that aid this current year. And then an additional fifty thousand dollars in terms of fund balance and reserves that we kick in to balance that budget to three point seven five percent. So here's an estimate of the tax rates per town. I'd encourage the public to take a look at the April second board meeting where we spoke a lot about assessed values and the share of the tax levy associated with the change in assessed value on a year-to-year basis. But North Castle, an increase of four point nine eight percent. Newcastle, one point nine. Decrease in Bedford and Mount Pleasant, two point oh eight and four point three. Again, here's another review, we spoke about this in April second as well, of the different changes per town in the tax rate. Again, this is associated with changes in assessed value on a year-to-year basis. Those changes in assessed value, we've heard this a couple of times, changes the share of the tax levy on a year-to-year basis. So this is again, twenty-four, twenty-five, all the way on the right here. So finally, tax levy increase of three point two eight percent. Budget of three point seven five percent, a total budget of one hundred and three, four sixty-four, seven twenty-six. Again, our final budget hearing will be on next week on May seventh and then the budget vote May twenty-first from six thirty AM to nine PM at HCC. Any questions, please feel free to send me an email. And again, the vote, the third Tuesday in May, May twenty-first, six thirty to nine PM. ETSA will be providing babysitting, curbside babysitting and dog sitting.
And dog sitting.
And dog sitting, wow.
Um, so just encourage you to, to vote.
Thank you, Kelly. And on that note, can I have a motion to adopt the proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget and property tax report cards?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Yay. Unfinished business?
Oh, yeah, do we need to read the resolution now? Do we need to.
For the budget?
Uh, no.
Nope.
Do you have any unfinished business? No? Your business?
Wait, do you have to adopt the board of meeting agenda for next year? Do we have to vote on it? Uh, the board meeting calendar for next year? Yeah. Sorry. Adoption of proposed, oh no, that's the budget we just did.
That was the.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The board adopted.
I think we did that last, last year.
We just did that.
Yeah, reports.
All right. Just said unfinished it, I know. No man's, yes, very rusty.
I've got thirteen minutes to beat.
Super fun.
Did my.
Shut up. All right. So more student highlights, other than the students who just left. Um, I was so excited to have superintendent fun day with Amelia and Kenzie, who were superintendents for the day, they had their headshots done at my desk. They met with Mr. Mack, they met with me, they met with Ms. Lappel, they planned the fifth grade orientation day. They were helpers in their former elementary Comenhill teachers' classrooms where they learned that students say the darndest things and it has nothing to do with what the class was just talking about, which was precious. Like, to say the least, was precious. And then we came back here and they wrote letters to themselves when they graduated from high school. And we went to the high school to meet with Mr. Walsh and we hid them somewhere. We took a picture of Mr. Walsh hiding them for us and I gave it to the girls so that they would remember where that was because, you know, it is a long time. They are in fifth grade right now and they have a long journey ahead of them and hopefully they will remember that. But what a very special day and they are my replacements.
We're gonna have to have them come back when we do our tour because we had a reschedule tour.
Oh, I know, I know. They, they are awesome.
They look very official.
They were. All right, um, we had, oh, this is really great, Byron Hills High School Scholastic Art and Writing Award. This is something that we did, just like maybe we started this about ten years ago or so, I think Dwayne started it. We had the Region at Large East Awards. These are all of the originality skill, personal voice and vision. We had the Gold Key Painting for Featured Self Portrait, which I'm going to show you in a minute. Gold Key for Awaiting, which is like one of the most amazing drawings I've seen. Silver Key for Hidden Beauty, honorable mention. And we had another honorable mention, another silver key. I mean, just the, the accolades go on and on for these students. And then the writing awards that were submitted, Carissa Chung, Justin Isbon, and Anar Lalani, all for their pieces of writing that were submitted and, and just outstanding from twenty-seven hundred and eight works submitted, the Silver Key honorable mentions for them. Here are the two pieces that I was talking about, Bella Lammerdy, her, her fractured self portrait. I mean, I was, I was looking at that for so long.
Yeah, that's incredible.
It is a piece of art that you can look at for a really long time and just discover more and more about it every time you're looking at it. It's, it's.
It's like sober smile.
It's pretty amazing.
Beautiful.
And then, I don't know what to say about awaiting. I mean, that's like for somebody who loves kids and is a superintendent, that's about the cutest picture I've ever seen. With the eyes.
Really cute.
I mean, they're some amazing artists, so congratulations to them. Uh, oh, this was so much fun. Our LCC class at the high school had the ribbon cutting for their apartment. Remember, they did a BHF grant to have the apartment to help with life skills. We have a convertible couch in there where there are lessons on making a bed. There's a full-service kitchen in there, a washing machine, a dryer. There are handicapped accessible workstations for creating meals. The, the kids did the unveiling of the apartment to parents, to BHF members and to members of the school community and it was pretty amazing.
Are they gonna use it for adulting one-on-one?
They really should. They probably are, they probably are.
They have a laundry lesson.
Well, the laundry is a little small.
Oh, okay.
It's really for washing hand towels. So it's a little bit different. We'll talk about, yeah. Adulting one-on-one, I just have to say, you really don't have to separate those whites and darks. But then again, I had two boys, so we just didn't buy anything white.
Right.
Um, here.
Exactly.
We have our speech and debate students who were here tonight, we were so proud of them. And globe, global scholars unveil Holocaust survivor stories. This is pretty amazing. We had three high school students, tenth graders and eleventh graders who presented their investigations into the stories of these Holocaust survivors and they interviewed these Holocaust survivors, which is pretty amazing for kids to be able to do. And we all, you know, that history and, and understanding that history is so relevant and important and timely because we will not be able to do that forever, right? So this is like incredibly meaningful, that they were able to do this. Triumph Music, we had a lot of honor society inductions last week. We had fourteen students inducted into the Triumph Music Honor Society and here they are. Very cool. We had twenty students in the National Art Honor Society. I mean, really, just our art courses have, have just been outstanding. Here are the students who were honored in that honor society. Mu Alpha Theta honors the newest members. Fifty-seven Byron Hills School students were honored into that society. Stimulate profound interest in mathematics. And science research students receiving top honors, this was really great, the Tri-County Science and Technology Virtual Fair. This was the PepsiCo Tournament and we had a bunch of third place winners and second place winners. First place Jake Santos and Grace Lynn and Grace also won the top prize as an alternate for New York State Science Congress. I'm not sure how many more accolades they can get. Congratu, no, as many as they want is what I said. Congratulations, Anastasia Burns. I'm gonna show a clip in a few minutes, but we had nine students yesterday who did their signings to go to college for athletics. Anastasia was one of them, but she also is the Khan Edison Player of the Week. Congratulations to Anastasia. And, oh, why is that coming up? Alana Vitaj, basketball, and Javi Benneroff from varsity ice hockey are Bobcats of the season. Tim, do you want to do those, you want to start with yours?
I think of someone who is consistently driven and passionate about the sport they love and are playing. I think of someone that is willing to help others reach their full potential and someone that can keep the energy and attitude up of a teammate or a team even if the game isn't going as planned. Earning this award is such an honor and I know basketball wasn't like my main sport, but I'm really glad I made a lasting impact here for Byron Hills. So I think the season was like really unexpected because I haven't like touched a basketball since my CYO days, but seeing how persistent the girls were in encouraging me to play really helped me make that final decision. I think a moment that stood out to me most was seeing one of my teammates reach her thousandth career point. Grace and I have played like various sports in the past together, so just being able to play alongside such a driven and talented individual was something I was really grateful for. Earning this award again is just incredible and I hope, I encourage other female athletes here to take part in the sports Byron Hills to offer regardless of their experience.
Haven't picked up a basketball since CYO.
Someone that is a role model for the team and, and someone that puts the team above, above all else with full commitment to the betterment of that team. Coming in as a freshman, I think we won two games that season. The next season, we won five and then we won ten and this season, we won, I think we went eighteen and four or something like that. Progression over the four years is something I'm really proud of, that we built up more of a culture and a culture of winning for Byron and this season was the culmination of that. I, I think I've, I've worked really hard and I worked hard throughout the season to give us the best chance and opportunity for, for postseason, for all the accomplishments that we, we did get. But I also think it was, it was a huge team effort and I, I couldn't stand here and say that, you know, I could have done this on my own at all, obviously, it's, it's, it's a team sport, but the, my, my co-captain Eric and the, the alternate captain Zach Marvin and Eric Supriano, they were great all season. You know, it was, it was, it was a team effort and not just, just us. There were, there were other leaders on the team. I think it all came together this year, which was an incredible experience.
I love having credit teammates, right? I was thinking the same thing.
I would think carrying that forward into their adult lives, that's great. Oh, and here is our, all right. So we have the nine students taking their sports to the next level at senior signing day and here they are in all of the schools that they're going to. Congratulations, it was a pretty awesome event yesterday. So many kids came, right? It was a packed house. Everybody on their teams, parents, other kids in the community, it was really fantastic. And last but not least, we would like to congratulate Scott Lee.
Ah, you didn't know? Two surprises to him. So you are going to be receiving a distinguished service award from Westchester Putnam School Boards Association. You didn't know that?
Well, we usually announce every month, so I don't think they were trying to surprise you.
Well deserved.
Well deserved and we were honored to be there and celebrating. And that is it, we had lights learning action, but you can go on the last meeting, the last week, if anybody wants to look at our proposed project for the high school. Terrific.
Excellent.
All right, Tim? Tim, do you have anything?
I do, yes, I want to talk about our character education principles. I've spoken to you at various board meetings over the past three years about the work of the site-based team and we have been studying our character education principles, so we're ready to unveil that. You have a laminated copy that you can leave up on your fridge at home and remind your children about this all the time and yourselves maybe. So I'll go through those in a moment, but I want to talk first about process. So it was back in nineteen ninety-eight when the district first surveyed the community and adopted character education principles. And then I brought it to the site-based team a few years ago and asked the question, are these still relevant today? Should we be thinking about any changes to the principles after twenty-some years? So we spent three years reading various books and researching character education and its impact on learning and decided, yes, they're important and yes, we should revise them and update them. So it was after a lot of study and a lot of meetings with chart paper and post-it notes and surveying our entire community, which included students, teachers, administrators and parents, we eventually came around a new set of principles that I'll introduce in a moment. But first, this is all on our website, so you can go to our website and see this information and access it. So first, why character education is important, we wanted to put up the rationale. And so there were three things that for us signify the importance of it. The first.
The first is that character enhances learning. So through surveying, a lot of different research, there's a clear link between such traits as self-regulation, goal-setting, perseverance, curiosity, integrity, and respect that link directly to academic achievement. And we thought that was really compelling. And then our second principle is that, or second rationale, is that it prepares you for life beyond high school. And several significant organizations like the World Economic Forum, the American Psychological Association, all speak to various aspects of the impact that employers are looking for with character ed, such as problem-solving, communication, teamwork, or some, to name a few. And then finally, our other area that really was compelling to us is wellness. Uh we want our students to be healthy and we know there's like a a link, a direct link between students' social and emotional wellness and academic achievement, and all the literature points to that connection as well. So it was for those three reasons that we felt the reason why we wanted to really continue to focus on character education, update our principles, and continue to do that work for our students. And also on our website, um we also list all of the references and research here. Um we just felt it was important to document why this was important and what the research, the body of research was that supported this work. So to unveil those, let me go through what our new principles are, and then I'll tell you what our next steps are gonna be. So first, um we titled the principles Creating Citizens of the World. We do believe uh it goes hand-in-hand with creating the leaders of the next generation, that we do feel that this really does develop strong citizens. And so we have three areas, the first is respect. And we say that respect fosters positive relationships, a sense of belonging, and connection to community. Under each of these areas, we list action statements. So for respect, we have show kindness, gratitude, and appreciation. Show respect for self and others, engage in respectful and civil dialogue. The second area we have is empathy. We state that empathy strengthens connections with others and builds social and emotional wellness. Seek to understand other points of view, be curious about others in the world, show compassion toward others, engage in service learning opportunities. And then finally, we have perseverance and resilience. And we state that perseverance and resilience assist in overcoming obstacles and achieving goals. Embrace collaboration, learn and grow from challenges, make informed choices, act with integrity and courage, advocate for self. So we believe those action statements lead to that strong character and we put in the rationale for each one of those. So we're very proud of this work. Um we will continue to develop resources in our work at the site-based team over the next few years, where would be to, how does this look in our schools? And what are the outcomes we expect for students at each grade band? And so that'll be work that will continue, and we're gonna continue to update our website with resources for families and our community. So we have a few things posted there, this will continue to grow as we explore this work in our schools and do some work with our community and provide more resources. So I wanna thank our site-based teams, particularly our principals who were really leading this work in their buildings, and the assistant principals. Um administrators, teachers are part of the site-based team as well, and the parents who worked really hard on helping us synthesize and develop this amazing list.
And this is K twelve, right?
K twelve, yep, yes. So we tried to keep it in language that we felt everyone could be a part of, and it went through a a long process of narrowing things down. Um and we tried to keep it simple but add a lot to make it rich and thought it was really relevant today. So I wanna thank the site-based teams and thank you for your support.
Tim, it's great.
Your support.
Yeah, this is amazing.
I love it.
Thank you.
And when everyone else in the world was getting rid of the site-based team because it wasn't required, Tim called to me, I was keeping it.
Kept it going.
And thus, our children and our community are propelling forward, thank you.
Yeah, it's a great tool that we have just to
Yeah.
have all stakeholders sitting around the table, right?
Yeah.
Really amazing, and when we, I called upon a sub too many to help me make sense of our work over three years.
Yeah.
And we had volunteers and these amazing parents who came really forward and helped us um really work on this document. Well, if we can engage in respectful and civil dialogue, every college that our kids go to will be very happy. It's like the number one thing right now, exactly, yeah.
It'll be interesting to see how different, how this looks different at each of the schools.
Right.
You know?
So that's our goal, um starting next year is to think about what are the outcomes for students leaving Coleman Hill, for leaving Wampus, for leaving Crete, for leaving the high school, does that look like? We're gonna try to develop companion resources to this.
Great.
Okay.
Because it's very different at every grade level, and some can be more emphasis than others.
Yeah.
We're excited to do the work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tim. Thanks, we're so proud of this work. Kelly, Dana, anything else? No? Any board reports?
I have a quick one. Um PTSA, a few things, um May tenth is a multicultural night at Wampus, which happened many years ago and there was a number of years where it didn't, and now it's been revamped. And it seems like um there's a lot of energy behind it, it should be a great event, and there are, I think, should be a fair number of people there. Um second thing is on May twenty-first, their year's kind of culminating now, and they'll um have the nominating slate for their new executive committee, um so that's that's coming up soon. Um and then lastly, a lot of discussion about how to continue to, or how to enhance support of the theater program, which is great. Um and then on the BHF side, the gal is coming up soon, on Friday night.
Yes, Friday night.
Yep.
Sent out a reminder today, and I hope everyone comes to the community, it would be great. Hmm, they look wonderful.
Thank you very much. Any communications to the board? And we have a motion to approve the board minutes from April sixteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Hold a favor. And can I have the motion to return?
So moved.
Second. Favor. Okay, Kelly, David.
Thank you, thanks, Mike.